Let us celebrate the highness of our Lord. High, high, high. We lift you high, we lift you high. We lift you high on a praise. We lift you high from the earth. We lift you high. You sit at the right hand of the majesty of God. High priest, high king, high spirit, high prophet, lift you high. Oh. Let our king be lifted high. Let our king be lifted high. In the highest. Let our king be lifted high. Lifted high in our hearts, Hosanna. In the highest. Let our king be lifted high. Jesus, you've been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Oh. Jesus, you've been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Jesus, you've been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Jesus, the Son of God, you've been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Been lifted higher. Let our king be lifted.
Let our king be lifted higher.
Let our king be lifted.
Let our king be lifted.
The kingdom of righteousness, the kingdom of peace, the kingdom of glory. Let our king be lifted.
Let our king be lifted higher.
Jesus, you've been lifted. Been lifted.
Higher.
Been lifted.
Higher.
Jesus, you've been lifted. Apostle and high priest, been lifted higher. Jesus, you've been magnified. Been magnified right now. Been lifted higher. Jesus, you've been exalted. Powerful within us.
Higher.
Been lifted higher. Oh, come, oh come. Hallelujah to the lamb. To the lamb. Oh, come, oh come. Hallelujah to the lamb. To the lamb.
To the lamb.
Oh, come, oh come. Salvation of glory. To the lamb.
To the lamb.
Oh, come, oh come. To the lamb. To the lamb.
To the lamb.
We won't stop praising you. We won't stop loving you forever and ever.
We won't stop praising you. We won't stop loving you.
Forever and ever. Forever and ever. We won't stop praising you. We will never stop.
We won't stop loving you.
Forever.
Forever and ever.
We will never stop praising.
We won't stop praising you.
We will not tire.
We won't stop loving you.
Forever and ever.
Forever and ever.
Oh, come, oh come. Hallelujah to the lamb. To the lamb. Oh, come, oh come. Hallelujah to the lamb. To the lamb. Oh, come, oh come. Glory and power of the truth. Salvation and strength.
To the lamb.
Oh, come, oh come. To the lamb. To the lamb.
To the lamb.
Oh, come, oh come. To the lamb. Join your angels to sing. Oh, come, oh come. Most high is the rock of flame and fire. To the lamb. To the lamb.
To the lamb.
I won't stop praising you. I won't stop loving you forever and ever.
I won't stop praising you. I won't stop loving you forever and ever. Forever and ever.
I won't stop praising.
I won't stop praising you.
I won't stop loving you. Forever and ever. Forever and ever. I won't stop praising you. I won't stop loving you. Forever and ever. I won't stop praising. I won't stop loving.
I won't stop loving you.
Forever and ever. Forever and ever. I won't stop.
I won't stop praising you.
I won't stop loving you.
Forever and ever. Forever and ever.
Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I adore you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I will love you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I adore you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I will love you.
Jesus, there is none like you.
I've been in love but taught you were faithful. Jesus Christ the Son. Heaven and earth adore you, great Savior.
And the one that left behind.
I've been in love but taught you were faithful.
Jesus Christ the Son.
Heaven and earth adore you, great Savior.
And the one that left behind.
I've been in love but taught you were faithful.
Jesus Christ the Son.
Heaven and earth adore you, great Savior.
And the one that left behind.
My whole life, Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know. I like you, Jesus, my whole life. Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know. I like you, Jesus. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I adore you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I will love you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, 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 holy. You are truly holy. I will love you. Jesus, there is none like you. Holy, holy. You are truly holy. I will love you. Jesus, there is none like you. I've been in love but taught you're my Savior to the uttermost yes. I've been in love but taught you will save us to the uttermost yes. I've been in love but taught you're a Savior to the uttermost yes. I've been in love but taught you will save us to the uttermost yes. My whole life, Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know. I like you.
I like you, Jesus.
My whole life. Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know. I like you.
I like you, Jesus.
You're my new normal, my new pleasure, my new delight. You're my new normal. You're my new normal, my new pleasure, my new delight. You're my new normal.
You're my new normal, my new normal, my new normal.
You're my new normal.
You're my new normal, my new pleasure, my new delight.
You're my new normal. Your flesh and blood. My new normal. My new normal. Your grace and truth. My new normal, my new normal. You're my new normal. This is the real normal.
My new normal, my new pleasure.
This is really hard to live, you're my new normal.
My new normal, my new normal, my new normal.
You're my new normal. My new pleasure, my new. My whole life, my whole life. Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know. I like you.
I like you, Jesus.
My whole heart, Lord, it's yours to receive. I just want you to know. I like you.
I like you, Jesus.
My whole heart, Lord, it's yours to take. I just want you to know.
I like you.
Jesus, high of life. You are the author of life. Your word is life. Everlasting life. Life is your business.
Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
Jesus, high of life. You are the author of life.
Your word is life.
Everlasting life.
Everlasting life.
Life is your business.
Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
God most high. God most high. The highest is your life.
Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
Say, God most high.
God most high.
God most high.
God most high.
The highest is your life.
Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
The greatest selling business is your life. The fastest moving business is your life. The fastest saving business is your life. The fastest saving franchise is your life. The saving bread and water is your life. The fastest saving blood is your life. The most powerful is your life. The quickness be brought.
Is your life.
The faithful and true is your life. Grace and truth 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 is your life. The greatest selling bread is your life.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on prosperity. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on prosperity.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on prosperity.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on prosperity.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on.
With greatness and truth and righteousness.
Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on in majesty. Ride on, ride on, ride on, ride on prosperity.
Jesus, high of life. You lift your glory on high to give us life. You became light to give life.
To give the light of your life to every man.
Jesus, high of life. You lift your glory.
You lift your glory on high to give us life.
You became light. To give the light.
To give the light of your life to every man.
God most high. God most high. The highest is your life.
Is your life. Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
Say, God most high.
God most high.
God most high. The highest is your life.
Life is your business eternal. No God must have.
You are like a shattered stone. Heaven is like a shattered stone. You are like a jasper. Like a severed stone.
Like a jasper.
You are like a jasper. Heaven is like a shattered.
You are like a jasper.
Like a shattered stone. Like a jasper. Ah eh, ah eh ya. Ah eh, ah eh ya. Ah eh.
Ah eh ya. Ah eh ya.
Father of light, you've fathered light. You've fathered light. Father of everlasting light. Everlasting light, Father of light.
Father of light. You've fathered light.
You've fathered light, you've fathered spirit. Father, father.
Father of everlasting light.
Heaven and earth singing.
Holy, holy. Holy, holy.
All creation crying.
Holy, holy. We will respond. Holy, holy. You are holy in our lives.
Heaven and heaven singing.
Heaven and heaven singing.
Holy, 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 holy. All creation crying. Holy, holy. We will respond.
Holy, holy. You are holy in our lives.
Heaven and heaven singing.
Holy, holy.
All creation crying. Holy, holy. We will respond. So you are holy.
You are holy in our lives.
You are wise like a shahdai.
And you are wise. Like a shahdai.
You are wise.
Like a jasper light. Like a shahdai stone. Like a jasper.
You were God, no doubt. I will shout it out. I will sing about the Holy Ghost. Spirit of God.
Even when.
You were God.
You were God, no doubt.
I will shout it out.
In our lives.
I will sing about the Holy Ghost. Spirit of God.
Spirit of God, even when.
You were your love. My heart for you.
Sit down. My core in you. Let me be more.
Let me be your Lord.
In my way.
You were your love.
You were your love.
My heart for you.
My heart for you.
Sit down.
Sit down.
My core in you.
My core in you. Let me be more. Let me be your Lord. In my way.
My core in you.
Let me be more.
Let me be your Lord.
In my way.
My core in you.
My core in you.
I will sing about the Holy Ghost. Spirit of truth.
Let me be your Lord. In my way.
My core in you. Let me be more. Let me be more.
Let me be your Lord. In my way.
My core in you.
My core in you. Let me be more. Let me be your Lord. In my way.
You were God, no doubt. I will shout it out. I will sing about the Holy Ghost. Spirit of God, in my way.
Hallelujah. Amen. Come and just worship the Lord. If you're behind and you're not doing something, just come forward. I want us to worship God. Just give Him your own worship tonight. Lift up our hearts, lift it to our voice. The King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. Just worship Him in your own way, your own language. Mesupriata parahano se. We bless you, we bless you, we bless you. Just turn your attention to the King of Kings tonight. The Lord of Lords, Jesus. Masurie parahano ste. Empara namata karano se pora ta nosa poronas. Emprahano no printavano se borio tavano sisa tumrona sia. Para nosas ekreheva no ta poradona. Eramadona namata hanosia. Give the fruit of your lips and bless the King of Kings. So worship the Lord of Lords. We give you glory, Jesus. We worship you, Jesus. We reverence you, Jesus. We glorify your name, Jesus. We worship you, oh, King of Kings. King of glory, king of glory, king of glory. We give you glory. We bless you, we bless you, we bless you. Eremara namasu pereto se para ta libe, to libre, to libre, to libre. Lemiriota se printarabarota sia. Enfaramahu creontesiboro to viles. Masurie harabota. Mararama orioste. Magararamosia. Ode de mahor, we worship you. Bless your name. Mansus evrenis. Massa anomata. Manzote liprosea. Give him the worship of your attention tonight. The worship of your attention, of your heart, the focus of your heart. Focus your meditation, your thoughts upon the Lord. Upon the Lord tonight. Me kaluste poritava. Levran dis. La pranteli porini valore pansuste prondea. Marie kalor, malito lo, zelepreo, celebrados. We are gathered unto him, unto the Lord, unto the King. The King Eternal, Immortal, the King Invisible, the Only Wise God. The Author of Salvation, the Giver of Life. Who is like you, Jesus. There's none like you, Jesus, among the gods, among the gods. There's none like the Lord. Let's worship him. Just give him glory, give him praise tonight. Ripahas supro nivala proteo ste. Levranano, 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 levranano. Let your heart connect the spirit of reverence. The spirit of reverence for Jesus tonight. Let your heart connect with him, connect with the Lord. Messier tamore posse tamano ros. Mansoni mistato, we look to you tonight. I look to you. My heart looks to you. My soul looks to you. I look to you. Nefario poruste porinovios. Livirion tala marote sia. You alone who can save. You alone who has the words of life. We worship you, Jesus. The one who quickens, the one who causes dead things to come alive. Oh, Jesus, you alone have those words. We look to you tonight. Mantosurie paramazu se protevela. Levoradamos susserielabosa tarabota. Lepara namonce. Ora dabora moriato maria, I invite you. I invite your conversation. We invite your thoughts. We invite your thoughts. We invite your words. We invite your voice. We invite your spirit. I invite your spirit. I invite your words. I invite your counsels. I invite your voice. I look to you, Jesus. We look to you, Jesus. Remion samara poraro prestavaron de veloste. Libro talé ombrantamaro beo tu vizo stea. Holy arabota hanohoriam. Livanosta, libreosta, libreosta, libreosta. Levoni talido, talino, talino, melino, meleno. Mareno, merido, merido, merino. Mereno, mariendo, 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 mariendo. Mosara para tambos testes. Larabora sa. Levaran tosia debostei. La panapora donosta. Levana nosa poradiantos. Leantos se poradamortemioda. Levrona beo debondi prividimosia. Listes esomana rabarabara, barabarabara, bara bara. Ode de bara bara, bara bara, bara bara. Ora bara bara, bara bara. Era. Nasosta di manoritos. Mielopros. Meraman. Meramamanste. Meramoranste. Meramaranosa. Avanigoraste. Avagornaste. Omaganaste, omaganaste. Emigrantes de poya. Nafana, nafana, mofana, mofana, mofana. Masihana. Oh, Meretama, just speak to Jesus. Tell him I await you for a visitation tonight. Visit my heart, to visit me tonight. I await you, I await you, Jesus, an encounter with you. I desire an encounter with you. Massonike librostei. Liporana macoria boiveniste ore. Farandea eleponea, eleponea emigronte. Mazazos yestes esamoranimilotesia. Ladiprunas tebioredos. Ekrehem porataboras. Ibrahimakaraboras. Emprahikaporaboras. Emprahotaporas. I want us to pray, everyone pray tonight. I want us to pray tonight. Let's pray tonight. Pray tonight, pray tonight, pray to the Lord. Ask the Lord, call for the Lord. Ask, let your heart reach out to him. Come and have mercy upon me tonight. Make it personal, make it personal. Mesesuniam brividius se pradabara toste. Ripamam, ripalam, I look to you, Lord. Mansesia maranove for a visitation, for an encounter. I look to you, Lord. I hunger for you. I thirst for you. I long for you. I desire you. Mi onde veremonse. Ramamore, more, come and bless me. Come and bless me with grace. Come and bless me. Come and bless me with strength. Come and bless me. Come and bless my soul. Let there be a flow from you, from your heart to mind tonight. Come and fountain out into my vessel. Come and pour yourself into my vessel. Bring gifts of life, issues of life, streams of life, streams of grace, streams of truth tonight. Encounters. Mashureparo paramostovienostei. Repante yakalions azumrianta maprote vigelosta. Mamionvrekala masa. Come and rot in me tonight that which only you can do. Bring deliverances, bring helps, bring wisdoms, bring counsels, bring direction. Macao te sia. Liparamolopron devi. Reparamo sia toladarose. Bring strength out of Zion tonight. Mangrostesobrahata. Through your vessel, through your prophet, through your vessel, bring help tonight. Masara para mahosa sa. Ask the Lord, Lord, send your servant to me tonight. Mesalo braha, put in her a word, put in her something, something for my soul, something from you, something from you. I want to hear your voice in hers. I want to hear the sound of your heart. I want to feel and receive the spirit of your heart. Masier promelebro te sia. Mandurie parabata hasa. Encounter tonight with a great spirit of blessing, a special encounter with a spirit of blessing tonight. Open my vessel, create room, create room. Mesuprienta varabosteferhanosia. Emforatalanostea. Oricara mostarabasa. Lepante ribos supreviora. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. We bless your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Said, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Father, we thank you. Bless your name this evening. We give you all the glory. Thank you because we know your presence is here, your grace is here, your spirit is here. Thank you. Thank you for this great day to destiny which you have designed for us, which you've arranged for our soul. Father, thank you for your servant, your handmaiden who you have sent, you brought to us, Lord. Tonight you brought her, Lord, with blessings, with grace. You brought her with, Lord, helps, deliverances, counsels, wisdom. You brought to her encouragement, comfort from you, oh God. Father, we pray, Lord, you will condition us to be blessed, Lord, as you. As we receive her, oh God, as an angel of yours. Father, we pray, oh God, that you will cause that which you want to rot in our midst, oh God. Let it come to pass as you have designed it in the name of Jesus. Thank you, our Father. We give you all the glory and we give you all the praise tonight. But I am praying, oh God, bless our heart with a spirit of brokenness, meekness, openness, poverty of spirit. Lord, to receive and to drink from you and to receive from your vessel all that you have put in her for us. Thank you, our God. We give you all the praise. We bless your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I said, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen, amen. Hallelujah. You can have your seat. Thank you. Please just greet someone to sit down, please. Can we, can we, can we just walk around, just stand up, everybody, please? Amen. There's, uh, don't be tired. I know today is a workday, so some of us are tired from. Amen. Okay. All right, all right. Can we, can we settle down? All right. Okay, let's have our seat, please. Don't worry, we'll greet tomorrow, we'll continue. All right, let's settle down, let's settle down. Praise God. Hallelujah. Amen, amen. Good evening to everybody. Praise God. How many of you are glad to be here today? Go on. Are you sure? Are you sure? Glory to God. Praise God. Hallelujah. Today we have an angel. An angel in white. Praise God. Um, our mommy, Messiah, all the way from, um, the City Gate Church in, in Ibadan, Nigeria. Uh, this is an ambush of blessing. We're not, you know, we're not planning our calendar that we'll be blessed in this way. Uh, but the Lord has done it for us. Um, she, when I heard that she would be around, praise God. And I heard that she was planning, this wasn't part of her trip. She actually said she has to come to Otawa, to come and be with us. And she said she's just coming, she just wants to see everybody, that's what she told me, that she's just coming to spend time with us. Um, so can we appreciate God for her again? Pray, praise God. I don't know how tonight is going to go, but we know it's going to be an awesome time. Uh, Mommy Messiah, um, you, when I hear you minister, I see our grandmommy, mommy Helen. I see like there's just something about her that you've just taken, it's the sweetness of your spirit, your, of your words, of your voice. Um, you have one unique grace, which is, she knows how to release bullets with, with candies, like it's sweet, but... You know that kind of thing, sweet, but something is, something is touching you. Uh, I was so, also blessed to sit on her administration in, um, in Houston. We're there, I mean, if you watched that testimony, uh, it was a testimony, but for me it was a prophecy. I was seeing how she was prophesying the future, things that will come to pass. And, uh, she's an awesome, um, mother, she's a mother, um, woman of God. And there's a motherly grace I feel she's bringing to us today. And we're going to be blessed seriously, so please open up your heart. I really want us to have expectation, there's something, I know you, the way you receive someone, that will determine how the spirit will open and the liberty in the spirit that she will have to bless us today, today and tomorrow. Praise God. Um, mommy, I just want to say that we love you. And we are so glad and privileged to have you with us here. And, uh, we trust the Lord that the Lord will bring help, um, counsel, so please just be free with us, okay? Actually, when you look around, we are not, we are children. We are children, so please just speak to us, the way you will speak to your little children, anything that the Lord puts in your heart. Now, we are here to receive from you. Uh, with God's joy, please, can we welcome, um, mommy Messiah, Elubadebo?
Can you just lift up your hands to heavens and bless the name of Jesus tonight? Thank him for his sweet presence here this evening. Thank him for the grace to be here this evening. I would just want you to love him tonight and just thank him for life, thank him for counting you worthy, to hear this word of righteousness, thank him for preservation, thank him for counting you worthy to be a part of this house. Can you once again just lift up those hands to Jesus and worship him? Jesus, we worship you. Thank you, Father, thank you for giving us the privilege to gather once again. Thank you for always speaking, we will never take your speakings for granted. We will never take coming, gathering, under your presence for granted. Father, we lift up your hands and we thank you, Jesus, we thank you, Jesus. Her heart is filled with gratitude, Lord, I thank you for this house. I thank you for the privilege to gather with your saints, Lord, I thank you. I thank you for the great things you are doing in this house. Thank you for life, thank you, thank you for your leaders, thank you for all the trees you have taken them through. Thank you, thank you for gathering people from the north, from the south, from the west, from the east, under this great atmosphere. Thank you, thank you for the things you are asking in the spirit. Father, we thank you, I thank you, I thank you, I thank you for my brothers and my sisters, I thank you for the leaders. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, thank you, thank you for raising a company in this nation. Father, we thank you, Lord, we thank you. Thank you for hearing prayers that have ascended to heavens, calling forth for revival, calling forth for a guardian of the people in this nation. Thank you, Father, because you have started doing that, thank you for the people you are raising in this place. Father, we give you thanks. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. You know, many times we don't know, we don't, we don't even know that we are products of prayers, that we are products of mercy. There were actually answers to God's, to, to, there are actually answers to prayers, you know? I had the privilege of speaking to some of my friends that have been in this country for a while. And some of them are telling me that I know that we have been praying for years, as in they've been praying for a very long time, praying that there will be a revival in this land, that God will raise a company of people that are truly passionate towards God. I know what I told them, I said they are just at the back of your yard, they, they are in Toronto, I said, they said, you know, this prayer that you are praying, God is already answering their prayer. So, you know, so some of you don't know that you are actually answers to prayers, labors in prayers of people, praying that God should visit this land, that God should visit this nation, that God should raise a company of people that would truly love him, for who he is, not because of material things, but because they are truly passionate about becoming everything that the Lord wants them to be. Can you lift up your hands to Jesus and just thank the Lord and say, God, thank you, thank you for the privilege. Thank you, Father, thank you for the privilege to know you. Thank you for the privilege to hear the things I'm hearing in this season. Thank you for the privilege to follow you, the privilege to be under this kind of atmosphere, seeking you, loving you, following you. Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus, we give you thanks, Lord Jesus, we give you praise. In Jesus' name we have prayed. You can have your seats, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm so excited to be here this evening. I'm so, 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 so excited to see you guys live and direct, not just on the screen. Thank you so much, I want to appreciate you for the love, for the welcoming, I was so embarrassed yesterday, I was telling my husband, I said, I was really embarrassed yesterday, you know? Even pastor came to welcome you, I really felt so embarrassed. Thank you so much for the honor, for the love, you know, for the care, thank you so much, I love you so much, you know? I, I, I usually say, I love the Canadian brethren so, 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 so much. You know, I love your passion in the spirit, you know? When I see the passion, you know, and you're doing such a great and beautiful, I see the souls are so beautiful, you know? Loving the Lord passionately, they are not ashamed to express their passion for the Lord. And so, you know, that's really, when I see you people, I'm so, I'm so, so excited. So, even when I was coming, even though it was for work, I was excited because I know that I would have the privilege, you know, of visiting. I just wanted sincerely, I just wanted to just see you guys, okay, those people that I see on TV, let me just see them, live and direct. And I'm so, so pleasured and honored to be in your midst. Pastor, I want to thank you for the privilege to be here this evening, I do not count it as a right, you know, it's a privilege to, um, fellowship and minister to God's people and pastors. Thank you so much, thank you for your labor, I know it's, it's a lot to labor, it's a lot to labor here, thank you for your labor, you know, for giving to the Lord, for giving yourselves to the Lord. You know, um, the reason why, you know, I usually tell myself, oh, the Canadian people are lively people. What I mean lively is not just that, okay, they are friendly, I mean in the spirit, they've got a very lively spirit. I know that is because of your labor, you know? And my husband said to me this morning, he said, oh, it's years of labor, you know, in the spirit, it's what has raised people to also be like that. So I really want to appreciate you, Sam and Ma, for your labor and thank you for taking, everyone of you, for taking care of Fai Tolu. Thank you so, so, so. You have spoken so much about the brethren, you know? I've heard and heard and heard and heard and heard about the brethren, thank you so, so much. And I appreciate that with the Lord, the love of the brethren, not just only the love for the Lord, but also the love amidst you, you know, the community, I call it community life amongst, you know? This morning, I just wanted to take a stroll, I just wanted to walk and Fai Tolu was telling me that, oh, we have a lot of brethren, he said, okay, don't let us, let us add some small purpose to our work. And, you know, we kept moving and we saw brethren, I was so, so happy. So I really want to thank you, I really want to appreciate, you know, it's not, it's not common, especially in this kind of environment where people are actually built to be isolated, to keep to themselves. But, you know, by the help of the spirit, we've been able to build a kingdom community and tie, you know, the perspectives, you know, of the world. And I know that is not, that is not something small and it's not something that has, can be done by human strength. I want to really appreciate God's grace over this. I also want to appreciate you for receiving our parents, Reverend, Mrs. Kau, as an angel of love, for opening your heart so wide, you know, to receive them and to receive their grace. Thank you, thank you for your love for them. Um, I appreciate, I, I don't know what to say, but I really, really, I love you so much, I love pastors, I love, you know that song now? I love you so, so, so much, thank you so much. And I want to appreciate everyone for the love, for the honor, for the appreciation. Thank you, thank you so much. So, um, I know time is, um, going, um, so while I'm coming, you know, funny enough, funny enough, while I was coming, um, and Fai Tolu had already told me that, okay, that I was going to be coming and I was going, I said, I just wanted to come and fellowship, nothing, so you're going to minister to us. So I was really believing God, you know, for, um, that the Lord would give me a specific word, you know, um, for that, I just didn't want to come back. No, you people, pastor is a revelation, I don't have faith in revelation like pastor. So I was really believing God for a specific word that the Lord would want me to, um, to share with the house. And really, the Lord, um, actually gave me a specific word and, um, funny enough, my, boy was going to be a long trip, was a 12-hour trip, you know? So in the car, I actually wanted to listen to some messages and, Lord, behold, the Lord started speaking to me about, um, about the work here. So I had to, so I didn't even have a bureau and a pen, so I had to script throughout my journey down to this place. The Lord just started describing the atmosphere, the work that is ongoing and, you know, the things that the Lord wants to do, um, the characteristics of the house. God just started speaking to me and I typed them in my phone. So somehow, within the conference, I actually forgot. So when it was the time to round off the conference, suddenly I was going to head meeting, I was like, oh, what, 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 I didn't, I was, what am I really going to share with the people who head meeting and all that? Then, um, as I was preparing, then I, I got, I'd totally forgotten, because it was the day I was in the flight. So the Lord brought it back to my mind, I just remembered, then I, then I went to check, um, what I tapped down. So I actually wanted to share it in head meeting and the Lord said, that was not for head meeting, that it was actually for hot hour. And when I got to, so I was a little bit, you know, because I'd been very busy, so head meeting, I was like, oh, God, it's the same thing. I will share it in head meeting and I will share it, I decided, no, it's what I will have another word for the people in head meeting. And by the grace of God, I was able to, God was able to give me a specific word for them, which I, which I believe that actually, um, captures whatever stage or whatever they are going through. So I had to really write some of those things down, so I would refer to my book. So the first thing I want to say is that, um, this house is like a house of Joseph. You know, um, that was the picture the Lord gave to me, that it's a house of Joseph. And I want us to start by reading Genesis chapter 49, we'll read from verse 22 to 26. Um, so, um... And, um, we all know the story of Joseph, Joseph is, and we all know how God gave Joseph a vision of what he wanted to do and the processes that the Lord took Joseph through, until those things, um, actually found expression. I know there's something about Joseph, when you look about, when you look at the issue of the formation of the nation of Israel, Joseph was actually very key. Because if not for Joseph, Joseph had a key role to play when it comes into the formation of the nation of Israel. When, actually, when they moved into Egypt, they were just 17 in number. It was in Egypt that the people multiplied, they increased, you know, they flourished, and then they were now able to, God was now able to now actually turn them into a people by migrating them into the wilderness. But Joseph was like a major key factor because the famine that, um, took place in the land could as well have killed, could have killed that seed, you know? Um, so, um, Joseph was placed in that place, you know, um, as a critical factor to preserve that which the Lord wanted to do, not just only preserve it, but also to bring them into a season of multiplication and fruitfulness. So let us read, Joseph is a fruitful bull, even a bull, a fruitful bull by a well. So Joseph did not just become fruitful by himself or because he was going to be fruitful. He was fruitful because he was positioned somewhere, he was positioned by a well. And for us, that means that, um, one of the things that came to my mind is that that well is like the well of salvation for us, you know? So as long as he was by that well, that well was what supplied everything that made him what fruitful. Said, whose branches run over the wall and what stands as limitation? So, most, um, Joseph was positioned in such a way, there was something that was nourishing him, there was something that was giving him supply, such that he grew above every limitation. You know, anything that you could, you could, you could think as a limitation, limitation of the flesh, limitation in the spirit, his branches, you know? He grew to a point that he had branches and they were running over the wall. However, he did not, he did not stop there, because the truth of the matter is that whenever God is doing anything, the enemy also is aware. And as long as he knows that this thing is, anything that makes God's, God's, um, God's purpose to prosper definitely brings Satan down. So you actually fight it. So we see that Joseph's life was not without, um, controversies, was not without warfare. So verse 133 says, the accas have sorely, they don't just only grieve him, they have sorely grieved him and shot at him and hated him. So one of the things you will notice that in this, in this season where there's a lot of emphasis on building and not just building structures, he's building the lives of men. One of the things that, that attracts is actually warfare. So really, this house is going to attract a lot of warfare because lives are being built. So, and you will see that in Nehemiah, when Nehemiah was building the walls of the temple, you will see that at the beginning, they thought it was just, was just, um... They didn't, they didn't see the gravity of what was happening. So initially, they tolerated them, in fact, Sambalat and Tobiah were mocking them and saying that, what are you guys doing? They were looking, they sought the work, but they felt it wasn't, the work wasn't a threat, it wasn't, it wasn't nothing to them. And then they said, oh, that even a fox, even if you just imagine that kind of mockery, that even if a mo, a fox should move over that wall, that the wall was actually going, going to come down. So let's see, and now Tobiah, the ammonite, was there, and he said, even that we debuted, if a fox go up, it shall even break down their stone wall. So you could see the mockery, so you see the enemy would initially, when they see the work, they would mock the work, make light of the work, as if nothing is happening. But we see at some point, they now began to realize that, oh, this, this, what these guys are doing is actually something significant. And the warfare moved to another dimension, in which they had to go and, you know, and even wanted to attack them physically, so that they had to be building and at the same time be prepared. You know, they were building with one hand and then they have, um, things that they were going to use to make warfare, to fight on the other hand. You know, what I'm trying to say is that each time there is any, when God is doing major things, works of, book of building, there is always attack. The enemy would always raise an attack. If you are doing jamboree, doing those things, my just, you know, because you know, you're not a threat. And once you notice you are doing something, I can mock it and say, oh, this thing is not going to survive time, it's not going to do well, do it. But once he realizes that, oh, it's as if there's something serious taking place and he sees lives being changed, people being built, he begins to see progress in the spirit, he mounts up. he mounts up a warfare. And I mean serious warfare, and if you read the book of Nehemiah, we won't be going down today, you see that there was a whole lot of warfare, from mockery to physical attacks to a point in which they wanted to, they wanted to bring deception, saying that he should come for a meeting, they would close the door, you know, to the point in which they went to the king to collect a letter to stop the warfare at different levels. So building, anything that has to do with building, building, like building and in this context, building a people for the Lord, because what the Lord is, what the Lord is particular about in this world is not just only about a single person being built, he's, God wants a company of a people that are built, that can truly be an habitation for the Lord. And so we will see, so let's go back to that scripture about Joseph. So he said, Joseph is a fruitful vine, is a fruitful bough by the well. You know, whose branches run over every wall, so they began, it began, it was, so we can still, fruitful, consistent that has been built. So as it was being built, he was breaking through every limitations, things that were supposed to stop him. But it was not, that did not come without a warfare. The hatches have sorely grieved him and shot at him and hated him. Next verse. But his bow abode, so despite all that, say despite all that. So despite all the warfare, you know, and everything, said his bow abode in strength and the hams of his ends were made strong by the hands of the mighty gob of Jacob. From thence is the shepherd, the stone of Israel. Next verse. Even by the God of thy father, who shall help thee and the Almighty, who shall bless thee with blessings of heaven above, blessings of the deep that lie under, blessings of the breast and of the womb. Verse twenty-six. So we will see, I'm still gonna come here, but we will see that, you know, all these blessings, you know, all the blessings that came across the path of Joseph, I believe they were because he was positioned by a well. Say a well. You know, a well, and you all know what well, what comes from well is actually waters. So they were actually, there was actually a water that was bringing about this fruitfulness, you know, for Joseph. This well is actually the well of the blessing, I call it the well of the blessing. I know there are several blessings in the well, you know, and in the, in the New Testament, um, the, the, what typifies water is actually the word. So I will also see it in Psalm one, let's look at, let's quickly look at Psalm one. You know, Psalm one was talking about the blessed man. Said, bless the man that walketh not in the counsel of the oh godly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor seated in the seat of the scornful. But his delight is in the law of the Lord and in his law does he meditate day and night. Three, and he shall be like a tree, so planted by the rivers of water. So you will see that that blessed man that was being described in Psalm one is actually the same thing as this tree that is planted by the rivers of waters and that bring, and this is what happens and because that tree, that blessed man is, so there is a water that is bringing the blessing. Said, because that tree is planted by the rivers of water, he bringeth forth. So it's a fruitful bough, just like Joseph, in his season, his leave also shall not wither and whatsoever he doeth shall ward prosper. So the blessings actually comes from the water, said the blessings come from the waters. And you will see what was said in this Psalm one, said rivers, tree planted by the rivers, you know, of water. And we know that, you know, in the New Testament, we talk about water, it talks by the word. If you look at Ephesians chapter five, talking about the washing of the water by the word. So the word is actually likened to, it was, so there is a, there is a well. No, that well talks about, I call it the well of salvation, there is a word of salvation. When one is established in that waters, it brings about blessings, say blessings. I want us to look at Ezekiel thirty-one verse seven to also, you know, buttress this point. You know, he was talking in, um, Ezekiel thirty-one verse seven. Um, I think maybe we should start from four, so that, um, okay, let's go up a bit too. We are going to seven really, but, son of man, speak unto Pharaoh, king of Egypt, and to his multitude, whom art thou like in thy greatness. Verse three. Behold, the Asya was a cedar in Lebanon with fair branches and with a shadowy shroud and of an high stature, and his top was among the thick boughs. Verse four. The waters made him what? Grief. The deep set him up on high with a rivers running round about his plants and sent out a little rivers unto all the trees of the field. Verse five. Therefore his height was exalted above all the trees of the field and his boughs were multiplied, that is, had branches, and his branches became long because of the multitude of waters when he shut forth. Verse six. All the fowls of heaven made their nest in his boughs. And you know, I read that, that is talked about, that when you talk about birds, fowls of the, that talks about spirits. That you know, there, there's a level of stature you gain as a tree that begins to attract, you know, spirits, attracts God's presence. And under his branches did all the beasts of the field bring forth their young and under his shadow dwelt all great nations. So this tree became very great. Let's look at verse seven, this is where I'm going. Said, thus was he fair in his greatness, in the length of his branches, for his root was by what? Great waters. So the reason why this tree grew so tall, why this tree had branches, why this tree could attract, um, fowls of the air, beasts beyond that, it could provide shadow for the beasts and all that. It was because this tree was planted by a river and his roots went deep into these great waters, telling us the, the importance of water, just like we read in Psalm one said, and the waters made him great. The deep set him up on high with a rivers running about his plants and sent out a little rivers unto all the trees of the field. So we would see that the waters in this, like I said, the waters, the which we liken to the world was, as long as that tree was by that water and he keeps receiving supply, he came into a, he came into a point of fruitfulness, not just only fruitfulness, it had branches, you know, it had warfare, but despite the warfare, the tree was still made very strong. And you will see the blessings and you see these blessings, it take me back to, um, to Genesis. Those blessings, when you read those blessings, they're not just ordinary blessings. They are, those blessings are treasures of wisdom, say treasures of wisdom. Those blessings are, see those blessings as understanding. Understanding is actually what blessings, you know, after that, those waters talks about the word. Those are understand, seasons of understanding, different understandings that the Lord brings in each season. Those are the things that made that tree to become a fruitful vine. Can we quickly look at Colossians chapter two? Um, let's start from verse two, so that we can see. So there are the blessings, and you will see the blessings being described in, um, that Genesis, we're talking about the blessings of the heights, the blessings of the deep. Then there's something in that, in, sorry, before we go to this place, let's go back to that place. The blessings, you know, and describing those blessings, that Genesis chapter, let's go back to Genesis, then we'll come back to this. Even by the God of thy father, who shall help thee and by the Almighty, who shall bless thee with blessings of heaven above, blessings of the deep that lie under, blessings of the breast and of the womb. Verse twenty-six. So this is where I'm going. The blessings of thy father have prevailed above the blessings of my progenitors unto the utmost bound of the everlasting hills. So talking about the progenitors, you know, he was talking, talking about, I use New King James a lot too. You know, progenitor, in that place, talks about the ancestor. And that means, to me, that means that there are different blessings. If we, if we just apply this with Colossians chapters two, you see that the Colossians chapter two was talking about understandings, talking about God, the Father and Christ. The blessings of the progenitor talks about the understanding of Christ. And he's saying that the blessings, so when you talk about blessings here, we are looking at it as understanding. So he's saying that there's an understan, so there were different, these, these waters that was supplying, that because it was planted by a well, there were several waters that were coming and those waters were blessings. So he said that there is a blessing of the Father, that's, that, that, that is, that is even more than the blessing of the progenitor, blessing of your ancestor, who is an ancestor, it is Christ, said Christ is the firstborn among many brethren. So they had the blessings of Christ, not just only the blessing of Christ, they have the blessing of the understanding of the Father. And then he now said something, he said, this blessing of the Father, he said, it's, it's, it will, it's abound, said unto the utmost bound of the everlasting hills. Everlasting hills, we know that, you know, like we have been taught, so, so talking about everlasting blessing. The utmost part, the peak of everlasting is eternal life. So we'll see, said talking to us that, you know, this waters, you know, was not just only one blessing, it has a whole lot, you know, that was going to provide, you know, for this tree, for this tree to come into all the blessings that the Father has authoreded. Let's go back to Colossians chapter two. Said, that their hearts might be comforted, bring needs together in love and unto all riches of the full assurance of understanding. So we will see that here, understanding was counted as riches, as blessing. To the acknowledgement of the mystery of what God and of the Father and what, and of Christ. The next verse, verse three. In whom, so in all these three, are it what? All the treasures, you can also say blessings of what? Wisdom and knowledge. So the Lord is saying to this house, what I, what, what I perceive is that, you know, that this house is a house of Joseph. It is a house in which, as we stay by the wells of salvation, there are blessings, you know, that would come to us in understanding, you know. And as these blessings come, what would happen is that people, when people come into this house and the partake of these people will be, people will grow, they would have stature. There will be warfare, I'm not saying that, and there is going, and you must also be ready for what? For warfare. There's gonna be a warfare and the reason for that warfare is because of those blessings. Because the enemy knows that those blessings, as those blessings keep coming, people, like we read, people will begin to come into stature. It is actually the waters, you know, like I said, that, that tree gained stature because of the waters. So the waters is the blessing. So this house is going to enjoy a whole lot of blessing in terms of understanding. So it is a house of Joseph, say a house of Joseph. And you know, it is God's desire, like we know, it is God's desire that God wants us to prosper in all things, even as our soul prospers. So in this house, people will come and souls will enjoy prosperity. Souls will enjoy blessing, blessing as, and the understanding of Christ is coming, understanding of the Father is coming, understanding of eternal life is coming, all those, don't, don't joke with those things, oh, all those things. You should see them, see them as what? Blessings. Those are your blessing, understanding is your blessing. Those are the things that will give you stature. Amen. And one thing about, that we also saw about Joseph is that, we would also see that Joseph had the ability to interpret dark sayings, you know, he could interpret dreams, he had wisdom, you know. And people would, would share dreams, things that look plain, he, and he, he had insights. I believe he had understanding, you know, and that was even what brought him into the palace. Not just only that, you also, as, you know, you know, like we read, all this understanding of Christ, the Father, you know, and God, they are all treasures of wisdom and knowledge. And you will see that play out even in Jo, in Joseph, like we read, Joseph had a whole lot of wisdom. So I believe that one of the things God will also be doing is that God is bringing us into understanding, bringing waters across, across our paths. We'll be raising men in these places that are men of wisdom. We are not saying amen. Men of wisdom that have understand, so we see Joseph, you know, um, he was able to interpret dark sayings, he had, he, he, he could, he could give meanings, you know, interpret life, you know. Many people, so many people are held there that are confused and they don't, they don't, they can't interpret life the way it ought to, you know, but as they come here, they will find light. They will have meaning to life, you know, things about them that are, that looks dark, things about their life that bring, that is about confusion, things about their life, that they, they'll be able to see life with the lenses of the spirit. So one of the things that you will hear people say pastors, people come, is that they will say, oh, when I joined, you know, my life didn't have meaning, I just found out that, coming here, I could, I just found meaning, I could just find direction, I could just understand what is, I didn't know what was happening to me, but when I got there, I began to understand what is, that is the, the, one of the grace over the house of Jacob, or those over the house of Joseph. So things, it will bring clarity, clarity to people's life, direction, you know, it will come as people come, as they, as they come and they sit on that teachings and as they hear, they will begin, they will be able to see their life with the lenses of the spirit and not just as the world paints it. Amen. So what, so one of the things about the, the, for Joseph, for Joseph, I will say that the things that Joseph, Joseph went through a whole lot of warfare. And we see that the reason for, that the Lord took those things where, went through just for himself. Those things he went through was actually because of God's purpose. Let's look at Genesis chapter forty-five, we'll read from verse three to eight. And you see that all the sending him into the dungeon, all the going to Potiphar's house, all of those stuffs, they were all part of his journey to ensure the preservation, you know, of that nation called Israel. And Joseph said unto his brethren, I am Joseph. Did my father yet live? And his brethren could not answer him, for they were troubled at his presence. And Joseph said unto his brethren, come near to me, I pray you. And they came and he said, I am Joseph, your brother, whom you sold into Egypt. That's one of his warfare, you know, they sold him, you know, he had a vision, he felt, oh, this is what God is, like, this is what God is doing, God wants to raise a people, you know, had a fantastic vision that he felt everybody was supposed to buy into. But it attracted warfare, not from an outsider, from his brothers, say his brothers. You know, one of the warfare that is difficult to fight is warfare from your own brothers, that you've had together, you've slept together, if it's an outsider, it's easy to fight, but when your own people, people that you have worked with, people that has once loved you, they have once done things together and all of a sudden, they just turn yourself against you. Those are kind of, those are kind of warfare that, you know, eats you in terrible places. So you will see Joseph, but you know, and Joseph said, come near me, I pray you. And they came and he said, I am Joseph, your brother, whom ye sold into Egypt. So they sold, so it was his brother that sold him, it was not kidnappers, it was not, it was, say his brothers. They sold him, so that was, that was a terrible warfare, that's a warfare that is able, that can break a soul if the Lord does not help a soul. Verse five. Now therefore be no, so he doesn't have to say, be not grieved nor angry with yourself, that you sold me hither. For God did send me before you to preserve life. Say preserve life. So one of the things the Lord told me that this work is a work of preservation. You know, I wrote it down, said it is a work of preservation, that this work is to preserve life, that there is a work of preservation that this house is gonna be doing. Please, please, I, I don't know what that means, but you know, just so that it is a work of preservation. That, and some of the, some of the things that will be happening, it's, it's to bring, is to preserve it because something is still coming, that at the end of the day, when people, something is still gonna come, you know, just like famine eats the land, the brothers never knew famine was going to, was going to hit the land. But God had gone ahead, preparing Joseph to be a preservation. And I believe the Lord is saying that this house is a, is a house of preservation for this nation. You know, a house of preservation to preserve life. People will come here and they will find life. Said, for God did send me before you to preserve life, for these two years had the famine been in the land and yet there are still five years in the which there shall never, never be erring nor harvest. Verse seven. And God sent me before you to preserve you a posterity in the earth and to save your lives by word, a great deliverance. So I believe that this, so God is saying that this house is a house of Jacob, is a house of Joseph, it is a house of preservation for a posterity, for a generation. There is yet a generation that is gonna, that is gonna arise in this land, a generation that is going to bear the name of the Lord. And this work is a work to preserve that which the Lord is doing. Amen. So it was a work of preservation and we will see that by them coming into Egypt, they came in, they were just seventy. By the time they were leaving Egypt to enter into the wilderness, they were, they had already increased and multiplied. They had grown exceedingly. So if not for Joseph, really, the famine would have wiped them out. So I believe that there is something that the Lord is gonna be using this house to do, to preserve a generation, that people that the Lord will be bringing here to preserve, as they are joined to you, it will be a form of preservation of life for them. Yeah, so that's what, so you see people, people will get joined to you and the reason why God is, has positioned you here is to preserve, is to preserve, is as people come, life will be added to them. Amen. Amen. So the next thing we are going to look at, so there are three Josephs you are going to look at, you know, so we've looked at Joseph, then we're going to look at Joseph, the father of Jesus. Yeah, so let's look at, let's look at Matthew, is it Matthew now? Yeah. Let's look at Matthew, can you let me get the scripture where he talked about, Joseph was a just man. So, um, so describing Joseph, um, Joseph was described, then Joseph a husband, being a just man, say a just man. So Joseph was a just man, Joseph, the father of Jesus was just, and God, as God was saying, said that, you know, in, there was a law that in Israel at that time, that if a woman gets pregnant outside Woodlock, they actually stoned them. And we will see that sometimes the purpose of God actually comes with controversies, as there are a lot of controversies sometimes that are attached with things of eternal purpose. They don't come straightforward, because why we, God knows, he was the one that gave, that gave them the law, he knows the law. So why would you give that kind of a law and at the same time, give a prophecy that a virgin shall conceive a child? That was, that was totally contrary to what was, what was set, and that was going to, that was going to, so Mary could have been stoned to death. So I believe that that was why, when, when the Lord, I believe, you know, we've acted in German in church before that, when God was going to pick the people that will be custodian of his eternal purpose, which was Jesus, he did not just pick just anybody. I'm sure Joseph was not the only Joseph in Israel, and Mary was not the only virgin in the land of Israel. God had to choose a particular set of people that he knows that will be able to preserve eternal life, that will be able to preserve his purpose. God maybe could have been stoned, you know, and that baby would have died. So God had to look for lives that are compatible with his eternal purpose, lives that can preserve his seeds. You know, even when they are still yet in their vulnerable state, and I believe this house has that grace, grace to, grace to preserve things of eternal purpose, things of eternal counsel, to not, not even outside to other people, it may look a little bit controversial, people might not understand. People might be like, you know, you know, how can you fathom that a virgin, you know, is, is, should, doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to the logical man. In fact, it is contrary with to the law of Moses, which was what was, you know, which was what was guiding the church, you can call it the church at that time. So what God was doing was like totally, it was as if God was contradicting himself. So sometimes, as I said, sometimes things of eternal purpose, sometimes they come with a lot of contradictions, so you are going to experience a lot of contradictions. People will misunderstand you, people will not understand you, they will not know what you are doing, it will be as if you are doing something. So sometimes you might even doubt yourself, that I'm sure you are not preaching a mercy, are we sure that we are not saying the wrong thing? But in the midst, you know what they said about Joseph, Joseph was a just man. So I believe it was a man that had been justified by faith, so Joseph had, so he was a I believe that was why, when that angel appeared to him in the dream and told him that, you know, this pregnancy, we are the ones that did it there. He could, he was, I like, he was, he was a man that could be easily enchanted and understood God's purpose and could easily agree with what God was doing, even though there were a lot of contradictions around. So God is saying that this house is a house that can nurture eternal seeds, even in the midst of contradictions, even in the midst of controversies. Amen. It is a house that the things of God will prosper in. So that seed that was dropped in Mary could prosper in the house of Joseph. And we could see how Joseph, you know, like I said, this is a house, a house of preservation of life. So that seed, if it were to be someone else, maybe someone that is like a religious fanatic, that seed would not have, it would be the first person to even go and report to the Pharisees, and that seed, you know, in fact, what he wanted to do was just to, like silently push Mary away, did not even want to expose her to a point in which she will be stoned to death. So you will see that he had, he was a man of a good conscience. So he, so he wants, he said, to just, he did not want to make her a public example, and his mind was to just put her away war privately, privately. Just, just so that she will not be exposed to question, that, oh, I don't know, this lady is going to be stoned today, what if what she's saying is true? But I don't believe, I've never, it has never happened before, that somebody will get pregnant without, no. So even though she could have said, okay, I want to believe you, but at the same time, how is it possible, okay, anyway, even if it is God, shall go your own way. You know, so you see that he was a man of a good conscience, he was a just man, was a man of and it is in this kind, is in the midst of this kind of, that the things of God can actually prosper. There's a particular kind of state that would allow the things, and I mean things of eternal purpose. No, God has several purposes, but things that carries eternal gene, there's a kind of atmosphere that allows those things to prosper. And God is saying that this house is a house that has the potential to nurture eternal seeds, to see them prosper, to preserve life. Say amen. So he was a, he was a man of faith, was a man of good conscience. And lastly, we're going to look at the third John, the third Joseph, which is Joseph of Arimathea. Let's look at Luke twenty-three, and this is where I would really be focusing on. Luke twenty-three, I will start from verse fifty. And behold, there was a man named Joseph, a counselor, he was a good man. And he, he was a good man and a just, and a just. The same had not consented to the counsel of, and deed of them. He was of Arimathea, a city of the Jews, who also himself waited for the kingdom of God. Let's, I also want to look at this description in Matthew twenty-seven, verse fifty-seven, so you can see the description, the kind of man that this man was. When the heaven was come, there came a rich man of Arimathea named Joseph, who also himself was Jesus' disciple. Verse, so you see where the justness of whatever came from, so he did not just become just, just because he wanted to become just. He had heard the teachings of Christ that had produced faith inside him and had made him what, a just man. So he went to Pilate and begged for the body of Jesus. Then Pilate commanded the body to be delivered. And so when Joseph had taken the body, he wrapped it in a clean linen cloth. But I want us to use the expression in, in Luke for this, for this, for, for, for this. So let's, so the same had not consented to the counsel and did, but just wanted you to see that he was a disciple of Jesus. And he had listened to teachings and that had produced, made him a kind of man, a just man that could, that could desire the body of Jesus. So this man went on to Pilate and, is it the one I want, is it, okay, this man went on to Pilate and begged, and begged the body of Jesus. So this Joseph, this Joseph was a just man. He had, he's a disciple, he has been a disciplined follower of Jesus, he's heard Christ's teachings. And that teaching had produced him to be a just man. And so that was the reason why, when Jesus died, he went to meet, because he was a rich man, he went to, to meet Pilate, so he was, he had some level of influence and begged for the body of Jesus. Why was he begging for the body of Jesus? And what does this mean to us? One thing you should know is that in this season, God is very particular about his body. The Lord is very jealous, if there's anything the Lord is jealous about, if you want to be God's enemy, wage a war against his body, then you will see the Lord himself fight you. The Lord loves his body, say the Lord loves his body. The Lord loves his body, and so this Joseph was a man that loved the body. And the Lord is saying that this is a house that will love his body, say his body. So one thing about the house of Joseph is as, Joseph is a man that loves the body of Christ, that is jealous about the body. He's not just particular about himself, reading the scriptures, and one thing that we know in these end times, that God is not particular, going at the days of, you know, Shama, you know, if you know the story of, in Judges, in those days, for Judges, God just raised one man that would be the star. God is not interested in raising one man as a standard, God is, is interested in raising a people for himself, a body. So God is looking for people that will love his body, you know, was talking about, in Ephesians five, one was talking about, giving in judgment about to us, my son, I should love their life as much. Just as Christ loved the church, the church is his body. So Jesus loved the church so much that he did not give lamp, he did not give anything, he gave himself, say gave himself. Said he loved the church and gave himself for it. Verse twenty-six. That he might sanctify and cleanse it with the washing of water by the word. Verse twenty-seven, that he might present it to himself, a glorious church. So Jesus is desiring a glorious church, he's designing a body that will bear his glory. So if you go and knock, if, if, if you go and ask your God, what is one of the, one of the things that is very paramount in your heart? The Lord wants a body, the Lord wants what? A glorious church, say glorious church. A glorious, he's particular about raising a people that would have no spots, no wrinkle, that would be holy and without blemish. And that's one of the reasons why Jesus gave himself, he wants a glorious church, he wants a, and that church is not just one person, that church is a people. It is his body, say his body. So God, at the days where people build structures and whatever, God is looking for people that are so particular about his body, about a people emerging in the earth that will bear his own glory, say amen. And God is saying that this house is a house that will be particular about men becoming a body, about men becoming glorious, you know, and one thing, if Joseph went to ask for the body. As in, so he was passionate about the body. And so he was passionate about the body, he had so much desire and love for that body, because if he did not, because that, because they could, as, he, 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 he shunned every response. He could have said, oh, so you're also part of those people, and other, he did not, he, he said he went to beg for the body. He shows a, a level of love and desire. And the Lord is telling us that this house will be a house that is very particular about the body. So there will be a whole lot of budding that will be coming on this house for the body, to see a people emerge, to see people, you know, it's not just body, oh, I love the body of Christ. The body that Jesus is looking for is a glorious church, say a glorious church. Seeing people cleansed, people sanctified, people becoming holy and without blemish, that will be a major priority, a major budding in the house. Amen. So, so Joseph was particular, but said that he went to beg for the body, and verse fifty-three says, and he took it down, say he took it down. You see, one of the things that the Lord will be for us to be able to really reach the body, we will really need to calm down, say calm down. So he could not, there was nothing Joseph could do with the body when it is high up there, he had to calm down, say calm down. So in reaching the body, we are going to need a whole lot of humility, say humility, say meekness, say lowliness. You need to calm down, so calm down, so God will be, God will take us through situations and circumstances that will be humbling. And it is just for one thing, so that we can actually get him a body out of this nation. So there are situations and circumstances, you know, to really reach the body, so there are many things that we will go through just because of the body, say because of the body. Many will become vulnerable in places that we are not supposed to be vulnerable, we will be humble, we will be lowly, we will receive many shits just because you want to reach the people and because you want to raise a body for the Lord. That was one of the things, so he, he, he had to calm down to be able to get that body, and he said something, said, and he wrapped it in linen, say wrapped it in linen. So when he took the body, he did not just take the body, he had to prepare that body, say prepare the body. Let's look at Psalm forty-one, you see in Psalm forty-one, the Lord talking about, he said sacrifices and offerings, said he does not take pleasure in. But there is one thing he said he takes pleasure in, say a body prepared, say a body prepared. Let's look at Psalm forty-one, let's look at that scripture, and let's, let's look at that scripture. Sacrifice, sorry, Psalm forty, sacrifice and offerings thou did not desire. Remember, it was God himself that told them thou ordained sacrifices and offerings in the Old Testament, that they said, they should bring lamb, they should bring turtle doves, they should do this, bring grain offering, bring oil offering, and here we have, saying that sacrifice and offering thou did not what, desire. Said, my highest as what thou opened, bought offerings and seen offering as thou not what required. Verse seven. Thou said, I loy come, in the volume of the book it is written of me, I delight to do thy will. Oh my God, yes, thy law is within my heart. We're still going to read this scripture in Hebrews, in Hebrews, so you will see here, he said, sacrifices, I did not say, but one thing, my ears as thou opened. Open to do what? Open to hear the law, open to receive commandments, open to hear the word, because it is in the hearing of the word that cleansing and sanctification takes place for the body. Said, my eyes as thou opened, bought offering and seen offering as thou not required, verse seven. Then said, I, loy I come, in the volume of the book it is written of me, I delight to do thy will. Oh my God, yes, thy law is what, within my heart. Now let's look at the Hebrews version, can you hear me look for the Hebrews version, I think it's in, yeah, Hebrews seven five. Wherefore when ye come into the world is said, sacrifices and offering thou would not know, but a body, say a body. As thou prepared me. How, so what did they use to prepare the body? Say laws. Hearing of the law, hearing of the law comes to appoint you year and year and year and year, until the laws are written on the earth. Then a body is prepared, say but a body as thou prepared me. In bought offerings and sacrifice for sin, thou art no pleasure. So what gives him pleasure is a body what, prepared, say a body prepared. So a body, so when God sees a place where body is being prepared, that is the place of God's pleasure. He takes interest in such places, and what did they use to prepare the body? You know, Jesus said, he gave himself, said by the washing of the water by the word. You know, I'm talking about a tree planted by the rivers of waters, by a well, the well of salvation. He springs up life, that which washes, to prepare a people for the Lord. So he begged, so he had a desire to see a body, a, a, a body, he, that desire was there. And then he, 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 he came down, then he took the body and said, and he wrapped it what, in linen. But you see, the, the other one I said, the other, the other rendition in, in Luke said that, when he was describing Joseph, he said he was a rich man, say rich man. I can't hear you, say rich man. Said, when the heaven was come, there came a rich man. How did this, what is this rich, what is this riches? Say riches. So this was a man that was wealthy, I believe this was understanding. You know, like we read in Colossians chapter two, talking about the riches of wisdom. Attaining unto all riches of full assurance of what, understanding. And one place said he was a disciple of Jesus, so people that will, that will be able to prepare the body are rich people. Rich in what? Understand, for that is what you need to prepare a body, to prepare a body for the Lord, you need riches. And what are those is riches of Christ, riches of the Father, and riches of what? Rieses of God. So he said, he was a rich man, and what makes, what, what, what makes these riches, you know, what makes these riches is actually trials, say trials. Hey, I can't hear you, say trials. Let's look at first Peter, chapter one, I think, verse six, talking about the trial of our faith. So what makes a man rich? When you are tried in fire. When you are tried in fire, first Peter one, verse six. Let's go to verse six, wherein ye greatly rejoice, though now for a season, if need be, ye are in heaviness. And through many what? Manifold temptations. Next verse, that the trial of your faith, all those manifold temptation, all those contradictions, everything, they are, for one thing. That the trial is just to triumph, that the trial of your faith be much more precious than of gold that perished. Though it be tried with fire, might be found what? Unto praise and honor and glory at what? The appearing of Jesus. Next verse, whom have you not seen? Ye love, in whom though now ye see him not, ye believing, you rejoice with what? Joy, unspeakable and what? Full of glory. So now let's go read the, let's go read the interpretation in Re- in Revelations chapter three. Revelations three, verse eighteen. I counsel thee to buy of me gold, what? Tried in the fire, that thou mayest be what? Rich. So how do you get rich? By trials, say trials. So the man that will prepare the body, a house that will prepare body, will be a rich house. Will be a rich man, and that kind of person too will go through what? Trials. And we saw that in Joseph as described before, that Joseph was planted by the well. He became fruitful, he had branches, he moved over limitations, but what happened? Archers shot at him, they, they grossly attacked him. But yet his bow, said they, they, the archers have sorely gripped him and shot at him and ate him. So he's saying that all these things, all those things going, all those, going through all those things were the things that make him rich. Yet, yet, but yet his bow remained what? In strength. So he's telling us that how we become rich is by trials of our faith, say trials of faith. So, that a trial of faith be much more precious than of gold that what? Perished, give me the Revelations three version. So you will see this man, so look, look, so. I counsel thee to buy of me gold, tried in the fire, that thou mayest be what? Rich. And what? White remnants, say white remnants. Say white linen. Say clean linen. That was what they used to wrap the body. So after he took the body, he, he asked for the body, they gave him the body, he came down. And then he did what? He wrapped the body in what? White linen, in clean linen. So, and why is wrapping the, he said that the shame of thy nakedness do not appear. You know, the shame of the nakedness of the body of Christ is everywhere. People know all the fault of, of the church, of the body of Christ, of his believer, all these church people, you know? People have seen the nakedness, the corruption in the body. You know, people have seen it, but, but time is coming where God is raising houses that will clothe the body. That once again, the body will be clothed in white linen, in clean linen. So this rich man, this rich Joseph begged for the body, came down and wrapped the body with linen. Let's continue, can you take me back to, um, where we are reading? And when Joseph was taking the body, he wrapped it in a clean linen clothes, verse sixty. And laid it in his own new tomb, which he had euned out in the rock. One of the things that, so like I said, it was, he took the body, so I said he loved the body, he was jealous for the body. One of the things that the Lord is doing in this season is that, like I said, he's moving us from individualistic positions and bringing us to align with the body, becoming a people. God is particular about a people. And so as a house, we will love the body, say we will love the body. We will love the body. Jesus is very particular about his body. I remember one time before, before we started church, those times when we had some crisis in school and so we didn't even want to do anything. I remember when daddy saw my husband, he said, go to a church, said go and submit to a church, said go and love the body. Said don't just focus on the weakness of the body, said go to church, submit their fellowship with them, love them, love. That said, he said, love the body, tell anybody, say love the body. Because Jesus, sincerely, Jesus loves his body. Jesus will not tell your husband to love his wife, and he will not do more, he will not tell you to do what he's not doing. So even with the weakness, Jesus loves his body, and he's working hard to see that those weaknesses, those shame are taken away. To see that his body is clothed, that's why he's giving himself, he's, he will do washing, he will do cleansing, come to a place in which there is no blemish, so he can present to himself a glorious church, say a glorious church. And so when you talk about that body, you are also part of that body. So this house of Joseph, one of the things it will do is that it is a rich house. It's a house that when you sit under, you will be cleansed. This is how you sit under, you will be sanctified. You see Pastor, one of the testimonies of people will be that when people come, people say, oh, ah, I came with this, I never knew that I could even get over this. I used to have this, I used to have that, but you know, over the years, I've seen, seen this thing gone, I've seen this nature gone, I've seen this thing gone, I've seen this weakness gone, I've seen this infamity gone. It is because it is a house of Joseph. It's a house that loves, that is preparing a body, say prepare a body. So sacrifices and offerings, it do not have pleasure, he said, but a body, thou as what? Prepared for me. So it did not only, it did not only stop at that, he took the body and brought the body, brought the body, laid it in a tomb, euned out of the rock. My own translation says euned out of the rock. One of the things that, what I want to, I want to, I want to bring up, know that this issue, the Lord is, when we talk, when, the, in, in, in a, in a context, the body can also be likened to the building of the temple. And we know that in building of the temple, if you see in the Old Testament, when they were building the temple, those, those, the temple was, was built by eun stones. They first of all euned those stones in the quarry site, then they now brought the stones to the temple site to now fix them. It's because there was not, not supposed to be sounds of hammering and chiseling in the temple site. So the temple was built out of eun stones, say eun stones. And you see that the tomb, the, the tomb where the body was laid, said it was built of what? Eun stones, say eun stones. What does eun stones means, you know? You know, all those stones, when they fell, get them in the quarry, they are of different shapes and sizes. So what they will now do is that they will begin to beat them into sizes, chiseling, they will chisel them, cut them to such a way that those stones, when you bring one stone and you bring another one, they can fit to one another. And when they bring them, they have to fit, it is in fitting into one another that they can now actually build, that the temple is actually what is actually built. What does that signify? There are, one of the things that will be happening in this house is chiseling, say chiseling. Chiseling, chiseling of nature, perspectives. For one thing, one thing, one thing, what God wants to do is that, wants, God wants to use us to form a temple and habitation. So, you know, you know, imagine the fence, or maybe the, it is, it has one corner that is overstretched, so they have to cut off that stress so that it can fit into another one. So things will be cut off, dealings, so, and also, when, when we talk about those chillings, chiseling, they're actually dealings, dealings in our lives. So as the world is coming, one of the things that the world will be doing, it will be addressing so many things, so that as the world is addressing those things, we can now be fitly framed together, say fitly framed together. Let's look at Ephesians chapter two, verse nineteen. Now therefore, ye are no more strangers and foreigners, but fellow citizens with the saints. And so you will see in this, we did not just stop at that you are no longer strangers and foreigners, but he said, you are not stop at just being fellow citizens. Fellow citizens with what? With the saints and of the household of God. So scripture says that the Lord sets solid trees in families. So as God is bringing us into this house, one of the things God wants to do, God wants to build an household of God. Household, as the holding people together. Said and are built upon the foundations of the apostles and prophets, Jesus Christ himself, being what? The chief cornerstone. Verse, next verse, in whom all the building, all, you can say, all the stones fitly framed what? Together, say together. So pastors, we were described, we were, we were discussing yesterday, so exactly, when we are sharing some of the community life, you know, it's part of your DNA. You know, you will know a child, when, you know, one of the things you know that, oh, this child, if they say, oh, this child is going to be, let's say, oh, this child is going to be, um, maybe a, a president. One of the things that we know that that child will be a president is that that child will work, will talk, there's certain things that you start, you will start seeing certain characteristics from childhood. So, some of those things that you see that, you know, we are describing, I said that they were very organic, they are part of the characteristics of this house. So you start seeing them in trinkles, a strong tie amidst the saints, love of the saints, building together, coming together. You know, those are, those are already, um, how to put it, they are already attributes, they are already part of it. So you, so this house is going to be a house of strong communal life. I don't hear you say amen. This is a house of Joseph, you know, eun stones, eun to build a temple, so they will be built fitly framed. So they're not just building, they will be, say fitly framed. Tell everybody, say fitly framed. So in this house, there is no solo life, there is no, I love my space, I love my, it is not, it is not the, it is not the configuration of this kind of atmosphere. Oh, I love my space, I want some time alone, I want, it is not, it is not, it is not in your DNA, say it is not in our DNA. Say it is not in our family lineage. I can't hear you, say it's not in our family lineage. Say, oh, I just some space, yeah, 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 I, I, I like the church, I like, I like the, I like the assembly, but you know, I just need a little bit of space. There is no space, say fitly framed. Oh, I can't hear you, say fitly framed. You know what, you know what fitly means? As in fitly. You know what fitly means? As in no space, say no space. I, I just need some breathing space from the brethren, no, 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 say no breathing space. You are just, the, the, you know, you are just all over me, yes, we have to be all over you. Say fitly framed. So there's going to be strong community expression, some strong communal life. And it is because of the body, say because of the body. And you know what is, you know what is, you know what is going to do with it? It is the understanding, the blessings, as those understandings are coming, it changes our perspectives. It changes, you know, all the perspective that you have, love of me and me and myself, I, me alone. As the world is coming, you begin to see you lose those positions. And you begin to say, you begin to take more of the we position. Say fitly framed. And this house is going to be a, 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 a house that is rich in community life. I know why that is important. In, in Acts of the Apostles, when they went to pray, and God said they should pray, they were just, I think they were just one, one twenty, pastor Abby, they were just one twenty. Those people, if they had not had some level of fitly framed life, they won't be able to accommodate the harvest. So have you ever thought about it? Those people that joined them on the day of Pentecost, that they were supposed to go to their house. You know that they came to, they had places they were living. So as they were praying, the Holy Spirit came, they started praying in thongs, and then they came, they actually came for Passover, and then all of a sudden they joined. So where did they sleep? Where, where, where were they living after? Is they were fitly framed? Have you ever thought about that? So those one twenty that had been, you know, those one twenty were disciples of Jesus. They had been taught, they had been prepared to a level. So when that harvest came, so imagine somebody coming with ten members of his family, and all of a sudden, they, they are no longer going back to, they're no longer going back, so they go to Canada, and then they are no longer going to Ghana, and then they are ten, and then you have one room, and then they say, ah, what's your name, your name, sir? Ah, Pastor Tom, ah, so you are Pastor Tom, I'm seeing you for the first time. Nice meeting you, sir. And I say, ah, eh, Pastor, yes, ah, Pastor Tom, ah, these ten people, oh, they are not joining us, so they will start living with you. That was how it was, my sister. All those people that were here today, because they did not go, they did not return to where they were coming from. Say fitly framed. So they are already prepared then that they could, they had, their, their, their bowels were enlarged to accommodate the harvest for a body to arise. That was why, when those people came, you know that, because maybe they were living somewhere, they had what they were doing, they were no longer walking, they did not, that was why some of them were selling their lands to cater for them, because when those people decided not to go back, some of them lost their livelihood, so some brethren had to take care of them. So they had to sell their belongings, they had to sell things just to accommodate them, say fitly framed. Say house of Joseph. So that is what it means to be rich. They were what? Rich, say rich. So when you are talking about riches, so what will make them do that? What will make them do that is understanding. So they were not afraid of their goods being plundered. They were not afraid, there was no fear, they had been disciples of Jesus, they had followed him, holy ghost had come, they had been empowered, they had understood they were rich. They were rich enough that they could accommodate the harvest that was coming. You know that harvest was going to be part of the body, so they could accommodate the body, they could clothe the body, they could prove that, Joseph Arimatia said he was a rich man, he could provide white linen. He asked for the body, he begged for the body, he had a place to place the body. He already had a new tomb that had been eun. So I want to tell you, see, you know, this number that we see here, you are like the, you are the eun stones that they are building together as a tomb to bring those people that will be added. You'll be able to accommodate, be able to nurture, people will come, you'll be able to, you'll be able to nurture them, be able to provide them, people that are naked, people that are downtrodden in society, people with wrong perspective, that don't have, don't, don't know meaning of life, they don't know what life is, they come, and then you are able to clothe them with light, with white linen. And they will not just clothe them, you not just say, okay, you don't, you will not be clothing them from afar, they will be fitly framed, say fitly framed. So part of the DNA of this house is that this house is going to have strong communal life. And it is going to be one of the ways in which you will prepare the body, say prepare the body. So this is going to be a house that is passionate about the body. Passionate about the body, passionate about the body, a body, the body, the body. Ready to take shame, ready to take contradiction, ready to take anything just because of what? The body. Because you want to see a body, you want to see a people, a people cleansed, a people bearing the glory of God. A people coming into the attainment of all the riches of understanding. Say the house of Joseph. So these people that now fitly, that is not the hand though, that fitly framed is just the beginning of the journey. Let's look at Ephesians chapter two. Say fitly framed. So in whom all the building fitly framed together, they will now grow. So that fitly frame is not going to stop, you know that when they are growing, all the species You know that when they are growing, all the species will be closing them off. Say fitly framed, grow it unto. So that fitly frame is going to increase. Ah, you didn't hear your amen. Say fitly framed together, grow it unto an only temple in the Lord. That is one. "In whom you also are builteth together for an habitation of God." So the only, so the fitly frame will grow and become an holy temple. And they would continue, they will make progress again until they eventually become what? An habitation of God. Say an habitation of God. So there is never a time in which our love will diminish, our love for the saints. So the community life is not as if the fire will go down, it's not as if we have more breathing space, the breathing space will be reducing. It should be reducing. We will, we will blend into one another so much. You know that when you see the temple, you won't see even, but then this house now, you know, it's, it's, we have so many blocks that makes up this house. Can you separate, can you know that this is block one, block two, block three? Everything is already what? Into one, into one. So we will grow together, we become an only, only temple. And it will not stop there. As we do that obedience, they will bring another location to us of our, of the love, fervent love of the brethren. Then eventually, when we obey that, we will eventually become what? An habitation of God. Amen. Let's quickly look at John, um, John chapter seventeen. "The final abode, the final destination is actually to become God's habitation." So let's look at John chapter seventeen. Um, let me look for the place where he said, "If you hear my words, then I will bring my Father." I want us to start from that point. "E that had my commandments and kept them, e it is that what loved me." And these commandments, you know, they come with understandings that, understandings that the Lord brings to us, actually comes with their own instructions, with their own commandments we are supposed to keep. And once those understanding come, and then we are able to walk in those things, what happened is that God says, "That is my definition of love." Love is not just emotional, oh, but it's in keeping the words, keeping the instructions, the commandments attached, you know, to the words. "So that e that loved me, loved me shall be loved of my Father, and I will love him and will manifest myself to him." This, it will make himself known, grant more understanding. Verse twenty-two, but it did not stop there. "Jesus said unto him, not his cry, 'Lord, how is it that thou wilt manifest thyself unto us and not unto the world?'" Verse thirty, next verse. "Jesus answered and said unto him, if a man love me." So this one is different from this one here, this word here, is different from the one he gave in twenty-one. So he said, "I will not, if you have, when you have done the first allocation, then I will make, I will manifest myself to him." That manifestation also is going to come with his own instructions and commandments. And so that was what he was saying in verse twenty-three, that if, and he said, "If a man love me." So that means that man that love him, he is already manifesting himself to him. Whatever he now manifests, whatever the new allocation he brings again, if you keep it, then my Father will love him. And what will you do? We will, so it's not only Jesus now, both him and his father will now come unto him and make what? Our abode with him. You know, I'm just trying to show us what I said in Ephesians chapter two, that a time comes in which you are built into, you are first fitly framed, you are stones, they fit you into one another. But even before they fit you, they would have done some work of chiseling. Cut it like, at least you can feel, when you are not fitted to an extent, you say it's still not enough, you not have to grow with that fitness to become an only temple. Why you now do that only temple? Ah, when you become an only temple, they are happy. It is a level of pleasure. Then they will manifest themselves to you again. They will bring another allocation of love. They will take the love commandments to another level again. Then when you now do that one, then Father say, "Ah, now it's not only Jesus, it is Jesus and the Father, yeah, come, let's come and, this is, we have, we have found our place of rest." That is what it means to, we will, me, me and my Father will come and will do what? Make our abode with him. That is become an habitation for the, which it is the Lord's desire. The Lord is looking for a people in which they can, that can bear their glory. Let's look at Revelations chapter three, verse twenty-one. We, we, um, we, let's start from nineteen, I think we started from there, I don't know, round up. Let's go back to, let's go back to seventeen, let me see seventeen. "So I can sell thee to buy of me gold tried in the fire." And I've said that this gold tried in the fire is what makes you what? Rich. Yeah, becomes a rich house. So for us to be a rich house, we are going to go, so, so, you know, I used to tell, I said, initially, I used to, I don't used to like trials. I don't used to like faiths. I'll be like, do we have to always believe? Can't, can't things just happen? As in, do we have to, ah, why is this world full of wallah? You will overcome one, you will enter another one. See, until, when I now began to hear Reverend, I found out that, okay, the just shall live by faith, that you can never live. If you're not going through trials, you are dead. Because the just shall what? Live. That if you want to live, you have to be going through thirty processes, different levels. So that thing, that thing was what settled me, that made me and trials five and six. I remember when I'm, so it gave me a different perspective to trials, that each time the Lord brings, if, each time I face a particular trial, that it is because I am living. You know, when you, when you say you should, what are the characteristics of living being? You know, Mr. Di Nijabi? Eh? You know Mr. Di Nijabi? So they, Mr. Nijadi, when they ask you that, what is the, what is the characteristics of a living believer? Say trials. One, trial is one of it, one, trials. And what is the characteristics of a living church? Trials. You will go through trials, contradictions, because the just shall what? Live by faith. And what these trials come to do is that they want to try, they want, that your faith that you said you have, that your love for Jesus. You say, "Ah, me, I love Jesus, so nothing can separate." "I'm in love with you." "Ah, I'm in love with you." They want to, know that song that he sang? "I like you, Jesus." They want to try it. They want to try that, you, you, you really mean, you, you, you really mean you like me? If you like me, you're gonna love my body, you know that? Then they will bring one sense to you, that will try you with everything. So, say trials. "So I can sell thee to buy of me gold tried," and they don't try gold in ice block. It is in what? Say fire. Hey, oh, you're not saying like Nigeria, say fire. Ah, it is a fire, oh. In fire, you go, you will go through something, so be like, "God, please, just AC, give me some AC for one minute. Let me breathe some, this is too much." They say, "No, we want to make you rich. That is how we make rich men, rich men that can prepare the body." Say, "I can sell thee to buy of me gold tried in the fire, that thou mayest be what? Rich." So every opportunity to go through trials is an opportunity to become what? Rich. It's an opportunity to cash out in the spirit. Every trial is what? An opportunity to cash out what? In the spirit. "So that thou mayest be rich and white women, that thou mayest what? Be clothed, and that thy shame, that the shame of thy nakedness do not appear, and anoint thine eyes with eye-salves that thou mayest see." Verse nineteen. "As many as I love, I rebuke and chasten, be zealous therefore and repent. Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man hear my voice." Say, "Hear my voice." It was the usual, the voice that I, that I talked to them about in Edmonton. So there is another location of voice in this season. So he said, "If you hear my voice and open the door." That opening door is respond, so as the voice comes, the voice comes with instructions, comes with commandments. Open the door means responding to those instructions. Say, "When you respond, then, then I will come into him and will do what? Sup with him and e with him." That is abiding. I will come and say, you know, when you sup with someone, is, you are staying with that person. So he said, "When you respond," said, "I will come, a voice will come. When you open the door, I will come, I will sup with him and e with me." Verse twenty-one. "To him that overcomes, we like grant to sit with me in my throne, even as I also overcame and am set down with my Father in his throne." Let's go back to, um, Genesis chapter forty-nine, where we started from. So Joseph is what? A fruitful bough. Even a fruitful bough by what? He will, whose branches run over the wall. "The hackers have sorely grieved him and shuddered at him and hated him." Next verse. "But his bow abode in strength, and the hands of his hands were meshed strong by the hands of the mighty God of Jacob. From thence is the shepherd, the stone of Israel." Verse twenty-five. "Even by the God of thy Father, who shall help thee, and by the Almighty, who shall bless thee with blessings of heaven above, blessings of the deep, thy light under, blessings of the breast and of the womb." Verse twenty-six. "The blessings of thy Father had prevailed above the blessings of my progenitors unto the utmost bound of the everlasting hills. They shall be on the what? Head of Joseph, and on the crown of head of him, that was what separates from his brethren." I believe that the Lord is, there are things that the Lord is taking us through in this season as a house. And I've just made this discussion so that you can, so that you can, you can, um, how to put it, so that you can also, I know you have witnesses, so that you can also be a witness and much more than ever before. You know, agree with the things that the Lord is doing. You know, first Peter chapter, what I read was saying that rejoicing, that we're rejoicing greatly in the trials. So there are many trials we will go through, but the trials are as a result of the waters, because the waters are the blessing. And we need those waters to become rich. And the reason why God wants to make us rich is because of what? The body. Say the body. So this house is a house of Jacob, blessed with waters, blessed with understanding, blessed with trials, and blessed with riches to prepare a body for him. So you'll begin to see, you know, you begin to see, all, so they might be in, in mind, so that's why I was saying that, yesterday when we were talking, I could see those things, all those communal, all those community life, love for the saints, love for the world. All those passion in the spirit, they are not just ordinary, they are not just because of that. It is because of an allocation of grace that the Lord has placed over this house. And those things are going to grow. Those things are going to increase. Those things are going to multiply, because you are like a tree planted by what? The rivers. Can we rise up on our feet this evening? I just want us to respond to the Lord and just thank the Lord. And I just want you, once again, I want, one of the things I want us to do tonight is to, I want you to thank God for your trials. Thank God for your trials. Thank the Lord, because those, God has brought those things to make you rich. Thank, thank the Lord for the processes of making you rich. You know, thank the Lord, I want you to thank the Lord, I want you to thank the Lord from your heart and say, "Father, thank you. Thank you for, thank you for all the things you are taking us through. Thank you for this season, this season in which you are bringing us into fruitfulness. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, 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 thank you for the wisdom you are bringing in this season, understanding that you are bringing to us in this season. Thank you for your voice in this season. Thank you, thank you for the process of fitly framing us together. Thank you, Father. Thank you for fitly framing us together in this season. Oh, Jesus, we thank you. 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 Thank you for the waters. Thank you for waters, abundance of waters. Thank you for bread. Thank you for, this is better here. It is a house of bread. Just like nations came to Joseph for food, even in the times of famine. Father, we thank you for preparing this house as a house of bread to the nations. 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 Thank you, Jesus. House of bread to the nations. For preservation. A place of preservation. A house of bread. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Amen. You know, this house is going to be a house of bread for many nations, just like Joseph, you know. Joseph was able to, in the times of famine, the time of famine came upon their earth. And he did not just only feed Egypt, several nations, other nations, they came, they came to, they came, you know, to get supplies, to get supplies for sustenance and for preservation. So one of the things that I believe the Lord is doing in this season is that the Lord is taking us through a stretch to enlarge our bosom, because a time is, a time is coming where there will be demands. I mean demands, a lot of demand. And so God is already stretching us, giving us capacity to accommodate more, giving us capacity to bear with people. God will bring all manner of people, all manner, you will come in contact with all manner of ministers, all, all manner of churches, all manner of people, you know, all manner. And as a rich man, you must be able to provide that which they need to prepare them as a body. And so it's a season whereby God is, is, is a season of stretching, you know, stretching, stretching, stretching. And you know, it's not, it's not just only for maybe the leadership, even for every one of us. It's a season in which the Lord is stretching everyone, bringing, building more capacity within us, building more capacity, making, you know, when we say a house of Joseph, not just only for the leadership, as for, as, everyone that comes under that umbrella carries that gene in their lineage. If you say somebody is also, that means you carry that thing is also upon you. So in every area, in every capacity, you know, the Lord is, the Lord is working those things within us, because there is yet a great harvest that awaits us. There's a, there's a great harvest. The Lord is particular about his body in this land. You know, like I told you, you know, I said they've been praying, they said they have been praying for years. He said, "We have been praying and praying and praying for this land." So, and I believe that those prayers in different places are not going to just go like that. So there are things that God is saying, so don't be, so don't be, don't be, don't, don't be, don't be locked in yourself, don't be locked in your needs. Don't be locked in yourself. Don't be locked in your needs. Don't be locked in the things that you want. Don't be locked in your problems. There are things greater than your problems. Tell the people, say, there are things greater than your problem. Say, the body! There are things greater than your problem. I don't know what your problem is, but there is a problem greater than that. It is the Lord wanting to see a body. Wanting to see a body, wanting to see a, not just a body, a body prepared. Say, a body prepared. First you prepared and then others being prepared for the Lord, a glorious church. Can we just lift up our hands to the heavens and thank the Father? Thank him for being part of this company, of this company in the spirit. Thank him for the passion that he has set in our hearts. Thank him, thank him, thank him for the things he is doing. Father, we thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Jesus. 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 May we never lose our wonder. May we never lose our wonder. May we never lose our wonder. A wonder for you, Jesus. May we never lose our wonder. Come and lift up your voice and say, may we never... May we never lose our wonder. May we never lose our wonder. Why die and mystify? May we be just like a child staring at the beauty of a king? Why die and mystify? Where we be just like a child staring at the beauty of a king? You are beautiful in all your ways. King of kings, king of kings. You are beautiful in all your ways. You are beautiful. You are beautiful in all your ways. May we never lose our wonder. May we never lose our wonder. May we never lose our wonder. A wonder for you, Lord. May we never lose our wonder. Father, we thank you. We thank you for your ways in this house. Looking at everything you are doing, all you can say is that you are beautiful in all your ways. You are beautiful in every dealings with us. We look at the graces you keep pouring on this house. We look at the things you keep doing in the lives of your people, how you are raising men, how you are building lives, and we see your beauty manifest. And our prayer is that Lord will not lose focus of this. Will not lose focus of the work of preparation of the body that you are doing in our midst. The Lord, we grant us more grace to align with everything that you are set to do in this season, to align with the words, with the voice that is speaking to us in this season, to ultimately see a people emerge on earth, a glorious people, a people without spot, without blame, which is only sanctified for you, Jesus. Thank you, everlasting Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you, Pastor.
Hallelujah. Amen. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Father, we thank you. Father, we bless you. We thank you. Lord, you will help us. Lord, you will help us to receive these words, word of direction, word of counsel, Lord, to receive these words, oh God. Lord, this... This is your heart for us, your heart for us. You sent your servant, Lord, here, Father, to, at this time, with this message. Father, I ask that you will give us the grace to receive it, to receive it, Lord, in all its richly, oh God, spirit of God, that even beyond what has been said, Lord, that your spirit will come again. He said that he will bring to our remembrance all that has been said to us. Father, that this word, Lord, will be held by our soul. You give us the grace, Lord, to hold it, oh God, to hold it as individuals, to hold it, Lord, even in the collective, oh God, that in all the ways that this word will need to bear fruit, Father, in us, in our life, in our conversations, in our heart, oh God, in our company, Lord, in this house, Lord. Father, I pray, oh God, that your spirit, your spirit, oh God, will help us in the name of Jesus. But I'm asking for spirit of interpretation. Lord, come and interpret the message, interpret the core of what you want to say, the exactness of how we ought to receive it. Father, oh God, we pray, Lord, that we will not, we will not commonize, we will not hold these words, these instructions, Lord, in a lower place of value, than what is what, Lord. May we be able to see the weight of the importance, oh God, for to send this to us, oh God. I ask that let the weight of it, the strength of it, oh God, the urgency of it, Father, oh God, let it rest upon every heart, in the name of Jesus. Father, the voice which you have brought, this voice, Father, of counsel, oh God, tonight, of Lord instruction, you have instructed us, you have reproved us, you've corrected us, Father. I pray, oh God, that this voice of God, Lord, will linger on in the name of Jesus, until you have confirmed us, oh God, and beaten us into the shape, Father, which you want us to carry, oh God, and to have. Thank you, our Father. We give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Father, thank you for your servant. Mommy, thank you for helping her, Lord, to yield her vessel, Lord, to open her heart, Lord, for you, first of all, to speak to her. Thank you for helping her ears to be open, to be tuned to you. Father, she said to us while coming, oh God, you just began to speak, to tell her, oh God, things that are specific to us at this time and in this season. Lord, if you did not speak, she will not have the word. Thank you, oh Lord, for orchestrating this great moment of blessing, this encounter. Thank you, oh God, for giving her the words, and thank you for strengthening her vessel. Thank you for giving her the heart, oh God, the hard posture, the right place of heart, to receive all that you've sent for us. Father, we pray for her, you will continue to help increase her, oh God, and to strengthen her. Lord, we pray, Lord, for you replenish her vessel. Father, replenish the grace, the spirit, the anointing, the strength, oh God, and strengthen her again for tomorrow. Lord, we ask that you will speak to her again, afresh. You will send her again to us, afresh tomorrow, that she will bring to us the right word, the word in season, even as you have put in her heart. Thank you, our Father. We give all the praise and all the glory to your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Praise Jesus. Can someone celebrate the Lord tonight? Just say, thank you, Jesus. Praise God. Does someone feel spoken to? Do you feel you have been ministered to? I... Mommy, I feel like you've been living with us, like you've been, like you've been now. In fact, I mean, those of us who pray together, you know that what she's ministering to us, right? This is the emphasis that, you know, just the body, the strong body that we've had in our heart. Everything you said about the body, about how we are supposed to be oriented, kind of the wholesomeness that we're supposed to have. You spoke about how we ought to be inwardly, you know, in the company, the community life, and also the relevance and importance of the way God has positioned us towards his body, which is the purpose of everything. And the Lord has been, for a while, the Lord has been sounding down that to us. And it's very clear to me now that the Lord sent you. This, I know you came for, you know, your professional, you know, reasons, but I believe that the Lord sent you to us to clearly... The way you brought it forth is undeniable. The Joseph, how many of you love that kind of? I was like, what kind of preaching is this? It's a different kind of revelatory ministration. It's... Ah, this is, this is powerful. Some things being mixed in there. It's highly prophetic, highly prophetic, but at the same time, just the clarity of the teachings. Is it prophetic teaching? It's very, very rare. I've not... Thank you so, I'm so blessed, Mommy. Thank you so much for blessing us. The Lord will help us, that we will not receive these words in vain, that he will guide us, you know, to become everything that the world has said, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you so much. Can we bless God for her, please? Just celebrate the Lord for her. Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to... How many of you will be here tomorrow again? Praise God. I'm looking forward to tomorrow morning. I don't know, again, what will happen, but I have faith that something great is going to happen here in the morning. Thank you, Jesus. Father, we thank you. We bless you, Holy Name. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Jesus. For thus, at the spirit of the Lord. For this is a confirmation. Oh, I hope I know how to confirm. Oh, my hope, I hope to come, to confirm, to, to, to firm, we've come to firm. So, so, for, 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 for firm, that's, I come to firm these things. We've come to make them very firm, very fit, even in your heart. We come to make them clear. Me I come, oh, I'm a man, I come. Oh, I'm a man, I come. For, for, I'm a man, I'm a man. For, I'm a man, is to bring even a firmness of my desire to this company. A desire to this company, a company that will look beyond, beyond its own things and will indeed start to gaze, start to focus even on the body. Start to fo-oc-oc-ocus, fo-oc, and oca is to oca, is to oca the body. And oca is to oca the body. And we have come to oca you to the body, to, oh, you, oh, you, to the body. Oh, come, I come to yoke you even to my body. We are come to yoke you. For, 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 yes, the God, my, the desire of the heavens is to yoke you. Is to yoke you even to the body. Is to yoke you to the body. For that is the pathway to being like, to being like us, to being like us. For we are body-framed, for we are body-framed. My body one is the body, is the body, is for the body, is to the body, is the thought of the body, is the body, is man's body, to clothe even his body, to make the body glorious, is to glory the body, a glorious body, a glo-oh, oh, oh, glorious body. Is to begin, bring a body, is to bring even a body, is to bring even a body. And we are heralding it even in this season. Man's focus is the body. Your focus is the body. And we have brought even our miss, even our job, even our own job, even our own job, oh, our own job, even our own job. Who is walking with us? Who has walked with us? Who has seen and borne fruit of this life to witness it to you? For, 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 these are very strong witnesses. These words are words backed with many strong confirmations, many strong affirmations. We have sent even our witness to show you that this is the pattern. And this is our very own pattern. Hallelujah. Amen. Amen. This is a moment of instruction. I'm not just saying it, I feel it, I feel it strongly in my spirit. The Lord is not just giving us understanding, which he has, but he's also giving us instruction. And it's an instruction, I believe, it's coming corporately as a house, the Lord will give us grace to obey. It's also, I believe, it's also an instruction coming also individually for us. That some of us, we need to begin to shift our orientation, the way we are oriented. I think there's initially, there's a way that some of us, just so that we can be, we can grow and be safe, you know, in our initial infancy and vulnerability. Because we just want to think, I don't care about anything, I don't want to think about anything or anybody. If they are not mentioning, you know, word of righteousness or anything, and I'm learning, I'm not even interested. And the Lord can accommodate that for a season, just for safety, you know, so that we can focus and get, you know, become stable and become... But there's a point where, you know, you can't be like that forever. You know, as Mommy has taught, as she has elaborated through her message. We need to have that feeling, the same feeling that Jesus had, like she showed, the feeling that Joseph had for the body, that same feeling. And so some of us, we don't, we don't pray, maybe we don't pray for the body. We don't, or we don't feel affected by the body. The Lord will want us to begin to have that kind of, that kind of mind. Um, some of us, there are, there are some people the Lord will begin to put in our house that begin to pray for this, this person, begin to pray for these people, that I also will have them to, to come into the knowledge of the truth. Everything that mommy has taught today. But I also want to bring them into understanding. I want to bring them to the waters. I want to bring them into riches. Praise God. I want to also bring that all these things, like she has said, that is to, is to create a company, right? That of the body of Jesus. He has that vision for everybody in the body. Praise God. And so I pray the Lord will give us grace to, in our own individual way, to begin to interpret, to begin to interpret. The Lord, so our, our, over time, we'll be sharing some, some things a bit more. It's not, it's not that maybe you are, you are changing to another focus. It's becoming more wholesome. You know, it's not, it's a different thing. It's not like we are saying, okay, now we are going to looking, looking for the body, no. It's becoming more, becoming more wholesome that, um, um, we, we must be affected by, you know, and we all attend different churches, you know, we interface with the body in different ways. But it's possible to be physically present in a place, but you are not, you're not affected by the, you know, God who desires that all men, all men, you know. And when he was saying that, he was saying to Timothy, right? Talking about prayers, I, first of all, intercession, right? Be, and giving of thanks be given to those who are in authority, kings, and then, and to, for all men first, actually, then kings and for their in authority that will may lead a, a, a quiet and peaceful life in world. All godliness and then honesty. And then for this is good, acceptable inside of God, who will have all men to be saved and to do what? And to come unto their knowledge. So it's tying this will of God to, as the basis of your prayers. If it's the first supplication, prayers, intercession, big giving of thanks. So this is an integral part of, uh, as when God has been raising his house. Said, my house shall be a house of prayer. And that the reason why he's raising that house is so that we can begin to. But there are prayers that we can pray for the body of Christ that nobody else can pray. Because they are not interested in some things. It will take those who the Lord has, who have, those who have tasted and seen the goodness of God to begin to pray for the rest of the body, um, to come into the same. Praise God. The Lord will help, will help us. Everything she said about even within, you know, being more compacted, being fitly framed together, all of those things. The Lord will give us grace to, to fellowship with the spirit of instruction. You know, instruction is when the Lord begins to tell you personally the changes that we begin to, we should begin to make and what we should begin to do. Love will give us grace to respond to, to his word. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen. Glory to God. Um, all right, I think we can share the grace in fellowship. The grace of our Lord Jesus, the love of God and the sweet fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with us now and forevermore. Amen, amen. Praise God, God bless you and, and see you in the morning.